It is five o'clock. I would like to call the meeting to order. Sandy, would you call roll call?
Counselperson.
Gary is going to be a few minutes late, but he will come in as soon as he gets here.
Counselperson Brinney?
Here.
Brinney, here. Perry?
Yes.
Hanson?
Here.
Thank you. Thank all of you for being here this evening. As always, you may address any of the items that are on the agenda. And item number four, citizens' opportunity to address the council on items not on the agenda. We will move forward now with a conflict of interest statement. Do any of you have a conflict of interest on any items on the agenda this evening?
No.
No.
B is approval of the minutes of the August 11th, 2015 council meeting. Oh, excuse me. We moved to consent agenda. I'm sorry. A, approval of agenda. B, approval of the minutes of the August 11th, 2015 council meeting. C, consideration of appointing Bobby Wells to the Historic Preservation Commission. D, receipts and disbursements. Do you have any questions or discussion around the consent agenda?
No.
I approve passage of consent agenda.
I'll second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the consent of agenda. Are there any additional questions or comments? I'll call for a vote.
Counselperson McGinty?
Yes.
Brinney?
Yes.
Brinney?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Now is the time for the citizens' opportunity to address the council on items not on the agenda. And there are a few rules that we go by in this section. You are to stand in front, state your name and your address. You will have three minutes to speak. We will not allow any personal attacks or profanity. And if something does get out of hand, John will remove you from the room. And he is also our sergeant of arms who is timing the speakers. So you will have three minutes to speak. If there are none, we move on to five miscellaneous. A, second reading of ordinance number 2015-268 entitled, "An Ordinance Amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of Sac City, Iowa by Amending Provisions Pertaining to the Zoning Ordinance."
One question that I have, and I probably should have brought it up last meeting, okay, and under section 1B, it says no fence, wall, or hedge more than three feet high may be located within 20 feet of any intersection. And it says 20 feet here. Now, in the other, is that in the P&amp;Z's, it says 30 feet? Is there any reason for the discrepancy or changing it from 20 to 30?
Not aware of a place where it says 30 feet.
Okay.
I can grab a copy.
Do I miss? Does anyone else notice that?
I can grab it, though. Can you clarify for sure?
In the, in the, in the copy that isn't changed yet, in the current copy, it says 30 percent.
Thirty, 30 feet?
There's 30 percent wording in there.
Okay.
And the point of, and the point of this change was to, was to clarify for our planning zoning officer what was allowed and not allowed, so they didn't have to make that judgment call about 30 percent visibility.
Okay, that makes sense. So maybe I, I may have misread that.
What section was it?
Section 20206. B.
Sure. B. No fence, wall, or hedge more than 30 percent solid or more than three feet high may be located within 20 feet of the intersection.
Okay, okay. So this intersection, this is streets and not alleys, is that correct?
I would say yes, but...
Is an intersection, is an alley an intersection, or is it just streets?
That's a good question. It's not clarified in code anywhere, the difference between the two. So I would have to say be open to interpretation at that point, which I think everything is referred to as, as streets everywhere else.
Well, that's a determination P&amp;Z can make and have your officer handle in that manner. Because if there's no record, I think it should be a record on your guys' part.
An alley is an intersection.
Does that sound fair?
Yeah, it does. I mean, that's, that's already just a call he's making as part of his job.
Very good. Okay, an alley would be an intersection, is it not?
No. I don't think so. I think that being an intermediate part of the block and not, intersections are usually marked streets or numbered numbered streets.
It may be that there is a, a definition of that in the, in the glossary that I'm just not aware of because I didn't review it before the meeting. Do you have a, do you have a copy of the code on, in front of you there?
What did you want me to look up?
Intersection.
Definition?
Yeah.
Oh, now you're putting me on the spot. It does not define an intersection within the chapter one definitions for, can you think of another word? Maybe other than intersection?
I was just curious.
It's not defined.
I know, sometimes a lot, there are a lot of hedges and stuff in alleys that may be different than, than streets.
Might be perhaps something we can take up as defining an intersection as where streets mean, and then, and then later on go to clarify.
This will be the second reading, so we'd have to pass it one more time anyway.
That'd be correct, yes.
What do you wish to do?
I would move passage of ordinance number 2015-268, an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of Sac City, Iowa by amending provisions pertaining to the zoning ordinance.
Is there a second to that?
I'll second that.
The motion has been made and seconded to approve second reading of ordinance number 2015-268 entitled, "An Ordinance Amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of Sac City, Iowa by Amending Provisions Pertaining to the Zoning Ordinance." Are there any other questions or comments before we vote?
Yes, so let's say we do make a change before the third reading and the final vote. Do we, can we just amend it and pass it?
You can amend before any one of the readings. So yes, you could make an amendment and then pass the third reading as amended, and it would then go into law.
Okay.
Good.
Okay, are there any additional questions or concerns? If not, I'll call for a vote.
Counselperson McGinty?
Yes.
Brinney?
Yes.
Brinney?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Five miscellaneous, B is a representative from Jackson Medical Supply to address the council regarding handicap parking.
I told her if she doesn't hear me and Adam would speak for her. She contacted me and Adam, preference of putting a handicap spot in front of her business, just because they have a lot of handicap people going in and out of there. At noon, that place is, you know, all main streets packed, nobody can get in and out, so I thought it was a good idea, but...
In order to do so, handicap locations are identified through code, through ordinance. So in order to do so, we would have to draft up a change to the ordinance identifying the handicap locations. So if the council would want to proceed with this matter, it would require, I, I need, if that's what you want to do, I need to know if that's what you want to do.
Would it involve changing accessibility with, at the curb there at all?
Uh-uh.
It would not, wouldn't it?
None of the other handicap spots have.
No, right. No. Basically, we would change the painting of the actual spot, and it might require the posting of a sign. I'd have to look. I think it requires, new spots, I think, require a posting of signs.
So would this, would the spot be right in front of Jackson Medical, or would it be in front of Mike Green's, which is where the, where the handicap access actually is?
That would be fine there, because right around the corner, you have another handicap that's there.
Right.
But I think what she was talking about was right in front of her building.
Think we'd better find out.
Yeah.
I mean, I think it's a great idea. It seems odd to have a handicap spot without, without, without a way to get up to her. You know, when you think about it, that intersection is, if cars park right up close to the intersection, it does block vision. If you put a handicap spot there and enforce it, that would preclude somebody parking there, and it would move the, you know, visibility, would increase the visibility if it were there closer to the intersection.
Now, you do bring up one particular point. If we cut the curb, under the new, as of January, rules associated with the ADA, you will have to make the entire curb area ADA compliant, which means you'll have to put a rubble, one of those rumble ramps in there, they have to be at a 1 percent grade. You will have to do all of the changes if you go to that depth of making the correction.
But there's, there is a, a cut at the...
Where the stoplight is.
Where the stoplight is, at least it's on the east, west side.
Yeah, but if you make a change to it, if you cut the curb.
That's what I was saying, if we went the one closest to the corner, there is at least a cut there for them to get off.
I would rather see that anyway than have one and then handicap and then another.
No.
If we're going to do it, I'd rather see it in that first place.
Maybe you... Would we need a motion to direct the city administrator to bring an ordinance back, or is it...
I think the first thing to do is have him at least investigate the situation, see what totally is going to be involved before we do it, you know.
I'll make sure that she'd be okay to with that first spot.
Exactly. We need to do a little more research before we make a decision.
Are you okay? Adam, find out more information or something?
Yeah, I'll have a talk with her this week.
Okay, all right, so we will not move on that this evening. Okay, five miscellaneous. C is discussion on Sac City Code of Ordinances, Chapter 41, Section 41.09, shooting and discharging weapons. And we do have Clint Maddox with us tonight to speak about that.
Right here. Yep.
Would you like to come forward, please, Clint? Clint is from the DNR.
Just to bring everyone up to speed, what Clint had proposed, Clint met with me last Wednesday, he proposed some changes to Chapter 41, Section 09, which is shooting and discharging of weapons pertaining particularly to an exception provision, which would authorize the, the use in DNR sanctioned hunting properties within city limits.
Does anybody else want a copy of the map or anything else? Well, as Adam kind of highlighted, it recently came to, I think, the city administrator's intention and the DNR's intention that due to an appraisal that was going to be done on a, a piece of private ground that's in the wetland reserve program with the NRCS, that the DNR has intentions of purchasing from the Iowa Natural Heritage Foundation, who holds the fee title currently, that there is a portion of what we would consider our wildlife management area, which is highlighted and red in the, the purple lines there loosely illustrate the Sac City, city boundaries. But there is a portion of a current wildlife management area that does exist within city limits. There's never been any enforcement, to my knowledge, of discharging of firearms within that portion which falls within city limits. There has been hunting allowed on that, albeit probably incorrectly because it is in violation of a city ordinance currently. The only reason this came to my attention is because there's currently an appraisal being done on this longer rectangle hashed out piece, that the hash line basically illustrates property in that area that's in the wetland reserve program. The red line illustrates what's currently under DNR ownership. But it, this, this new parcel up here, which is a long rectangular piece, is a, was owned by Mr. Glass and was currently enrolled in the wetland reserve program, purchased by the Heritage Foundation, and then the DNR has intends to purchase that, which essentially is all located within inside city limits. So I brought it up to Adam that there are, that other sheet that I provided you, just gives, basically just gives one example, just because it's the only one that I'm familiar with, that the city of Lakeview currently has. They have done amendment to their original ordinance as far as discharging weapons within city limits, and I'll read that out loud. The discharging weapons, or discharging weapons for the purpose of hunting wildlife is permitted on lands owned by the Iowa DNR and on waters of Black Hawk Lake, if hunting on said land or water is permissible under the Iowa code and regulations of the Iowa Department of Natural Resources. So basically, what that's referring to in the Iowa code is we have a, a law that prohibits shooting within 200 yards of occupied buildings. Doesn't necessarily mean homes, it means businesses or any other thing that is occupied by anyone during the day. It also pertains to livestock and animal feeding operations. So basically, what I tried to illustrate on the map was just residences around that said area that would fall anywhere, anywhere near that new acquisition and the current wildlife management area. Those, that's basically a 200 yard buffer, those yellow rings that you're looking at on the map, that illustrates basically where the Iowa code says it's safe to shoot from. So what I was hoping to do was, I don't know if it's correct to call it an amendment to the ordinance, but to do something along the lines that would allow hunting within Sac City city limits, as long as it is relegated to property which is under Iowa DNR ownership.
I do have a question. Is there any way that the DNR can stipulate what type of a weapon? We're talking shot shells or rifles?
I think that's kind of in your, your court, in my opinion.
I live there.
Okay. I, I think that is, that ball's completely in your guys' court.
But I think, is that close to town? I think anything muzzleloaders, rifles, high powers, I think it should be a shot shell only. Is that possible?
I would say within city limits, certainly, because I think that's completely up to you guys, because currently, currently what's been being done out there, it's primarily a waterfowl pheasant area. There are deer that use that. I'm not sure what the, the frequency is of people that visit that area for specifically deer hunting. I know it gets very heavy use for pheasant and waterfowl. I don't know of areas that we have personally done that before in the past, but I would think that's completely acceptable. I'm not 100% sure if we would change the entire area to basically just shot only and, and limit what we would call like single projectiles.
But from where the new acquisition that you're talking about, over to, it goes over to the fence line, there you're only talking about, about 400 or 500 yards?
Yeah, and I didn't put it on, on your folks' map, but basically from like the, where the armory is up there, directly to the west over to where our new boundary would be, is about 375 yards. And then if you step down to the next residence south of there...
No, I'm talking about the existing portion now that's not...
Oh, to, to the structure down here?
West of your proposal, on that small portion.
That's about 800 yards.
Yeah.
Which, which feasibly a single projectile, especially from like a small caliber rifle, could travel, and even from a shotgun or muzzleloader. If, it depends on the aim and trajectory, of course. But yeah, it's, it's feasible that that could travel that far, where shot would dissipate a heck of a lot quicker.
Thank you.
Another red out area, and you and I talked about this, but I wanted to hear, rest of them to kind of hear our conversation. Down on South Fifth Street, you guys also have another development area, which is identified in, on your map here.
Right.
Being that that's in such close proximity, the portions inside city limits are in such close proximity, in particular to one home.
Right.
There wouldn't be an area inside city limits in that area where...
No. Yeah, so what Adam's referring to is, we call this Sac access and river access down here. There is a small portion of that that is currently within city limits, but due to its proximity to the, the home that's closest to there, there is no discharging of firearms there currently, because it does fall, that whole area falls within that 200 yard rule.
So nothing we would do would impact that location at all?
No. So I didn't know what it takes to do an amendment to the code. Obviously, it would take a vote, and then, Adam, you, you suggested it would take multiple readings.
If they would like to move forward on this, at the next council meeting, there'd be an introduction and a first reading. Then at the following council meeting, there'd be a second reading, then following that, there'd be a third reading, and assuming the third reading is passed, it'd be posted in, in the paper, and the day it goes up in the paper, it becomes, becomes law.
Okay. The, yeah, so the, the thing, I guess, that I need to know is if, would, would you folks be comfortable with just the area that falls within city limits having, in a sense, a special ordinance? Because it would involve you changing the ordinance to allow using shot within city limits and not single projectile weapons. Is that correct?
Yes.
Questions, Scott, whatever?
I guess two questions. One, so if we allow just the shot and not single projection, you mentioned perhaps changing the area, the area outside of the city limits, so it would all be the same, because it might be difficult for someone to say, I just crossed the city.
It would be almost impossible to enforce, yeah, because there, there would be nothing out there that anybody could, within reason, understand where they're at on that area. So that, that's why I'd probably have to take it to my supervisor and see what they thought about changing the entire area, because law enforcement would have an extremely difficult time enforcing where somebody actually shot from if we did limit single projectiles.
I mean, that, I guess, if we, if we limit single projectiles, I would like to see the whole thing limited?
Yeah. I, I think that would make the most sense. Now, now, we would be, in a sense, limiting a little, probably a smaller number of folks who would utilize that area for deer hunting. I don't know if that's a concern. I know that I have got some complaints in the past from this general area. It was more what they could do to keep deer out of their yard, feeding on, you know, plants and out of bird feeders and stuff like that. So there is a deer population there that could be utilized by folks, but if there was a concern over safety, then obviously that probably trumps.
I mean, I would love to get fewer deer in my yard too, but I don't think they're going to suggest hunting in my backyard with a, with a projectile weapon, you know.
John, what are your thoughts?
Pretty much same as Tom, I guess. As long as there's no rifles in that, I mean, that's...
Right.
I don't have no problem with that, though.
You know, honestly, I live out there, and I see very, I don't think I've ever seen anybody deer hunting in that particular. I see a lot of pheasant hunters, but usually they're across the fence on the other side, over the dairn fields and then on down to the DNR ground, the wetland down there.
Right.
Really. You know, I haven't seen that many hundreds, period, out in that little patch.
Oh, the, the new area there?
Well, even, even the existing portion that's west of the new area.
But I know, I know it does get quite a bit of use for pheasant hunting, like you said, and, and I know some guys get back there, it's kind of a hike back in there to waterfowl hunt.
Yeah.
But I know that it does get utilized for waterfowl as well. I have, I have not really paid attention to what I would consider like the shotgun hunting parties out there, if there has been anybody out there or not. I know there has been a couple guys that have tried to bow hunt that in the past, but as far as basically that single projectile weapons, I've, I've not necessarily seen anybody out there. I don't know if anybody else has, per se.
Well, you're not allowed to set up stands on public land, are you?
You are, within 10 days prior to or after the season, yeah. But in an area like that, I mean, most of the time, we're talking about elevated tree stands, which wouldn't really pertain to that area.
There's not really any trees over there.
No.
Do you know of any examples? I see the example from Lakeview is kind of a cartilage, anything that DNR owns. Do you know of any examples that would have been for a specific piece of property, like saying, okay, it's all right, it exists, and if the DNR were to acquire additional property, we would revisit that at a later date?
I, I don't. I know there are other examples. I talked to another wildlife biologist up in Clear Lake around the town of Ventura, and like Ventura Marsh, a portion of that falls within city limits where they do allow hunting, but I can't say if that's specifically to an area or if that's just a citywide ordinance.
You know, right now, actually, we're, we don't have any, we're in violation of code right now, isn't that, you know, without having anything in place?
Anyone who goes in there would be in violation.
You know, and, you know, we don't want to change, you know, hunting season is coming up real quickly. We have a timeframe of, you know, three readings. We're talking minimum, what, six weeks?
Yee, plus going to the paper, seven.
Seven, seven weeks, you know, which puts us, you know...
Beginning of October?
Yeah, which puts us in the teal, or early duck season starts soon, so is there any conflict there in the meantime? I mean, it's been going on this way for a number of years. We're kind of in limbo right now, so...
Well, you know, you do have the option bill of waiving readings. It doesn't, as you guys all well know, it does not have to go three readings if you don't choose to go three readings.
Which that would shorten it by a month.
Yeah.
So we're talking a minimum of three weeks. Is that right?
Introduction and first reading would be two weeks from now. You can approve it, waive the second and third. It could be sent into the paper for the very next week, so three weeks.
Yep. I think if we proceed in a...
In quick fashion.
You're correct. I mean, if you, if you proceeded quickly, that, that would catch the majority of the hunting season, obviously, before the present season, and the regular duck opener would get the vast majority of folks.
You might miss a little of early teal, but that'd be about it.
Right.
Can you check on the possibility of what we discussed?
Absolutely. I, I actually did try to get ahold of a, of a gentleman down in Des Moines to, to just discuss that today, but wasn't, unable to reach him, so I will definitely do that. How would you like me to report?
You know Bill, or I know, or Adam, whichever. That'd be great. I appreciate that very much.
I'll use Adam as my contact.
That'd be, yeah, Adam would be the best contact.
So I guess the question I need to ask to the council is, do you want me to develop something without the use of single, single projectile ammo?
I think if you have it prepared, and hopefully they'll go along with it, it'll just expedite the whole process.
Okay. I just kind of...
Within city limits.
Right. Well, we're talking if the DNR can do the whole thing in that particular...
Right, okay.
I think that would expedite it, and I think that would, that's the impact on the vast majority of folks.
Good. That'll work.
Do you, do you have any issues with using the single projectile language? Is there a different term you'd rather I use?
Not a...
A single projectile is going to cover not only your rifles and your sidearms, but it would also cover your black powder, it'd cover your slugs and your...
Right, it would cover everything that Tom's concerned about, from shotgun slugs to muzzleloaders to...
That would be the simple solution, wouldn't it?
Right, it, yeah, the clearer the better, as far as regulations go, so yeah.
Okay.
Any further discussion, questions?
I mean, is there any way that we can include the, with the contiguous area, I mean, that it will be fine, that it, so the DNR can't change it? I mean...
You mean, do something if they did, we void ours, correct?
Right, so, so, you know, so saying, as long as the contiguous area is all not open to this type of hunting? Oh, I, you know, I don't think we need to restrict the whole area.
You don't?
Do you? Okay. If we want something enforceable, I mean, Bill...
Excuse me, I would probably agree with you. I don't think we need to restrict the whole area, but I do think it would turn into a law, an enforcement nightmare.
That's my thought.
Just because if, if, you know, if a game warden caught me coming out of there with a, with a buck or something like that, and somebody said, yeah, I saw a guy in blaze orange back there shoot this deer right here, and I said, no, that's, that's not true, it's, it's basically enforced in an invisible line, it would be really different.
Sounds, sounds good. I'm in agreement with that.
That's what I was thinking.
If, if it was a road or something that was a clear cut, I think it would be easier to do.
Nothing defined there.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much.
Very much.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Five miscellaneous, D is discussion on city property adjacent to 616 Hilltop Drive.
I'd be willing to address that.
You'll leave that?
Sure. What we're referring to is, is the Fairview area up there. Bruce, Perry and I met with Mrs. Wasson, Maybeth Wasson, with regard to an easement, or not an easement, a property that the city owns going from the street up on, is it Fairview?
going from the street up on, is it Fairview?
Fair.
Fair.
Into their property, which is currently an agricultural field. So the city currently owns that. And it was given to the city back in, on February 1st, 1961, by the Wasson family. And the intent at that time was to develop the property back there. That hasn't obviously taken place. And, and it was up to the private landowner to develop it, you know, if they wanted to in conjunction, you know, maybe working in turn with the city. You know, nothing has happened in, you know, since 1961. So Bruce and I, and feel free to step in, Bruce. Don't, you know, we think that it would be the wisest thing just to turn it back to the Wasson family. And at this time, they really don't care to develop it. And we see no benefit for the city continuing to own it. And since it was given to the city, you know, I should say, was purchased by the city for a dollar, $1 back in 1961, that we just think it's only prudent for us to give it back to them. There's no benefit at this point for the city of owning it. And, and just to return it and perhaps just to go ahead and proceed with the drawing up of the papers to do so. And Maybeth has indicated, you know, that she's willing to accept the cost of publication and so on, which, you know, we don't know the exact amount, but it's not, you know, excessive.
Do we need a motion to do that?
If they, they can choose to direct me to take action, to a motion, set a public hearing.
I think the.
Do we have a public hearing?
Yes, this requires a public hearing.
It will require a public hearing. It's a 50-foot wide strip that goes really right in front of Maybeth's home. And goes really pretty close to the front of her home. And I think, you know, she's, if she were interested in selling it, it would be a detriment to the home. Because about half of her driveway is in the area that the city owns. And at this point, something would probably have to change to do a street through there anyway. And it would seem counterproductive for the city to continue owning the property to me.
Do I direct Adam to get it ready for a public hearing?
Do we, you want to do it in a motion?
Yes.
I would move to direct Adam to prepare the necessary documents for a public hearing to return the property known as Wasson Drive back to the Wasson family.
Is there a second or not?
I'll second it.
Motion has been made and seconded to return the property adjacent to 616 Hilltop Drive back to the family. Are there any other questions or concerns at all about it? If not, we call for a vote.
Councilperson Hanson?
Yes.
McGinty?
Yes.
Branny?
Yes.
Brunnie, yes. Perry?
Yes.
Motion, Perry.
Five miscellaneous is E, excuse me, five miscellaneous E is committee and department head reports.
Their approach to the bridge deck on North Fifth? You put that in your report, Tom. Since you're here, I'll just ask you directly.
Well, they, they did, I had some company come in and pound it. It's called pounding, to see the vibration in the bridge. And they said, "We'll lose the decking of that bridge if we don't do some cutouts and replace." And I got surprised downstairs, but I don't remember what it was.
And the approaches are kinda.
Yep, and we'd have to have another company come in and jack them up.
Now, is that part of the county's responsibility too, since it's a farm-to-market road?
I don't know.
Talk about that once, Adam, at a meeting?
We did. It's been a while, but I'll approach the county engineer, because that's changed hands since that time.
Okay. I just don't think we should incur all the costs for that, because.
So anything regarding else regarding E?
Did you, you were about to mention a price?
I think they gave me a price of like $54,000. That was just the bridge deck itself for the fixing of it. And then it would take another company coming in to jack up the approaches.
Looking at the water report, I see there's, do we have any further updates on the painting of the water tower?
They've asked for some directives already. They want to use the new logo.
Using the new logo, that kind of, I mean, I, it's been, it's been in there for a couple months. I mean, are they, are we getting drawings for that, or do we know what's?
They're wanting an additional sum for that. It's gonna cost us about $10,000 to $14,000 for them to do the additional special artwork for it. So I'll have it on the next council meeting for you guys to, I'll get you the full details for it so we can move forward on it at the next council meeting.
So anything else?
Anything interesting in the police department that we should be aware of?
Nope.
We like to keep it that way.
Okay, at this time, we would like to make a motion to go into closed session under Chapter 21.51I to discuss administrator's performance evaluation. And at this time, we would ask the public to leave, and when it is done.
You have to wait until after the vote?
Yes, after the vote. But after that, you are able to return for the council forum if you would like. Yes, Curtis?
Which exception to the open meeting laws are you going into closed session under?
What did you say?
I'm sorry. Which exception under the open meeting laws are you going into closed session under?
It's actually defined exactly in the agenda, Curtis, 21.51I.
Thank you.
Which is a performance evaluation.
Thank you.
So do we have such a motion?
I'll make a motion to go into closed session under Chapter 21.51I to discuss the administrator's performance evaluation.
Second.
Is there a second to that? Motion has been made and seconded to go into closed session under Chapter 21.51I to discuss administrator performance evaluation. Would you call for a vote, please?
Councilperson Perry?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
McGinty?
Yes.
Branny?
Yes.
Brunnie, yes. Motion, Perry.
Thank you all for being here. You're welcome to come back. I would like to have a motion to come out of closed session, please.
I would make a motion to come out of closed session. I'll second it.
Motion has been made and seconded to come out of closed session. Would you call for a vote, please?
Councilperson Branny?
Yes.
Brunnie?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
McGinty?
Yes.
Motion, Perry.
We have, we have due results. We have dealt with the situation and appropriate corrective, corrective action has been taken. Due to the nature of closed session, the discussion cannot be shared. Now we will go on to council forum, which is item number six. Have anything to discuss, council?
Well, if the council doesn't want to discuss anything, I just wanted to say something about the council and to the, to the members of the public that are here tonight. First of all, I wanted to apologize to both the community and to the council. I wanted to make it perfectly clear that Barb and I acted ourselves. This did not include, the council was not involved in the process, nor was any employee involved in the process. And so I would like to make that perfectly clear. But profoundly sorry for the impact it's going to have to the community, and I apologize.
I would like to reiterate what Adam said. I am extremely sorry for any trouble that I have caused by Adam and my decision. It was not done with any malice intended. It was only done with trying to do the right thing, which was a bad decision in this case. I would hope that we could move forward from this time into a more positive direction. And I thank all of you for being here. And I would also say that the council members had nothing to do with this. Yes, Curtis?
What do you feel you should have done instead?
I feel I should have told the people that came to me that I could not handle this. It would have to go before the council.
Thank you.
Is there anything else for the good of the cause?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Oh, second?
A motion has been made and seconded to adjourn. Would you please call for a vote?
Yes. Councilperson McGinty?
Oh, yes.
Branny? Brunnie?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Motion, Perry. I need you to adjourn.